Town Board, tonight is a voting meeting followed by a work session. We have seven items on the voting meeting and ten work session items. If everyone please rise, face the flag. Councilman Lombardi will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as the remain standing for moments, to remember those men and women who were stationed around the world, who are protecting our freedoms and providing us with the blanket of freedom that we live under each and every day.
Thank you. I call this meeting to order, and if Councilman Michael Lugo would come up to the podium with his family, yes, with his family, and the Honorable Dan Miller, Town Justice. Michael Lugo was elected to the open Town Board seat, and the judge is going to do, administer the oath of office.
You can even, if you want, you can even like come up here and take it this way.
You ready, Mr. Lugo?
Yes, sir.
Repeat after me. I, Michael Lugo.
I, Michael Lugo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will defend the Constitution of the United States.
And I will defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a member of the Carmel Town Board.
Of a member of the Carmel Town Board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ready, your dad?
Well done, well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
This is so cool, he gets to read. So if our town clerk, Alice Daly, would please do a roll call attendance.
Councilman Lugo.
Yes.
Councilman Kearns. Councilman McDonough.
Here.
Councilman Lombardi.
Here.
Supervisor Kazari.
Here. So first up, if I could get a motion to accept the minutes from the November thirteenth, 2024 Town Board meeting.
So moved.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our first resolution is authorizing budget modifications. Councilman Lugo, could you read that first one?
Yes. Whereas Town Comptroller Marion Maxwell has reviewed the proposed budget modifications for the period ending October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, with the Town Board, which are detailed and explained on the attached Budget Revisions Schedule Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Zero Five. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes and ratifies the budget modifications revisions for the period ending October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, as shown itemized on the Schedule Number Two Zero Two Four Dash O Five, attached hereto, incorporated herein, and made a part hereof. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Lugo?
Aye.
Councilman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Second resolution is declaring certain equipment obsolete and authorizing its disposal. Councilman Lombardi, could you read that for us?
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Town of Carmel Chief of Police Anthony Hoffman, the Town Board of the Town of Carmel hereby declares the equipment listed in the attached memorandum dated November twenty, two thousand and twenty-four, to be obsolete and hereby authorizes its disposal according to the town law. I offer this resolution as read.
Second?
Yes. Could you get a roll call, please?
Councilman Lugo?
Aye.
Councilman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. The next resolution is authorizing amendment to the contract for professional services R Twenty Twenty Two Dash Zero Three Downtown Mahopac Improvements. Resolve that the Town Board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes the amendment of the contract previously authorized with Wood and Kern Engineering, Rybrook, New York, for design permitting, bid, and construction phase services for the downtown Mahopac improvements to include geotactical services as set forth in the memorandum of Town Engineer Richard J. Franzetti P.E. to the Town Board dated November nineteen, two thousand and twenty-four, at a total overall increase of thirty thousand and ninety-six dollars. I offer this as read.
Second.
Second by Lombardi, can we have a roll call on that, too?
Councilman Lugo?
Aye.
Councilman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Number four is a resolution authorizing the award of a bid for HVAC Unit Sycamore Park Contract C Three O Two. Councilwoman McDonough, could you read that for us?
Sure. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Carmel has previously authorized advertisement for various improvements to be performed at the Town of Carmel Recreation Building at Sycamore Park, specifically for the furnishing of a new heating ventilation and air conditioning unit. And whereas such bids were received and opened on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, any bid opening memo is on file with Town Clerk Alice Daly. And now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Carmel, upon the recommendation of Town of Carmel Director of Recreation and Parks Nina Calmeyer, the Town Board hereby awards the aforementioned bid to Thermodynamics Corp., Yorktown Heights, New York, the lowest responsible bidder meeting specifications at a contract cost of nineteen thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. And be it further resolved that upon review of insurance certificates and bonds in form acceptable to Town Council, Town Supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to execute all contract instruments and other documentation necessary to accept such bid and contract for said services. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Second by Lombardi, can we have a roll call on that?
Councilman Lugo?
Aye.
Councilman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Number five is authorizing deletion from the active list of the Mahopac Volunteer Fire Department. Councilman Lugo, could you read that?
Sure. Resolve that the Town Board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes the deletion of the following names to the active list of the Mahopac Volunteer Fire Department. Isabel F. Salsa, Michael R. Gong, Joshua Ramos Cisneros, John Scalabrine. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next resolution is authorizing the entry into a stipulation. Councilman Lombardi, could you read that?
Resolve that the Town Board of the Town of Carmel authorizes entry into a stipulation of agreement with Silver Service Employee Associations, Inc., One Thousand A F S C M E, A F L C I O, Town of Carmel Unit. Such stipulation to be informed is attached here too and made part hereof. And be it further resolved that Michael Kazari, Town Supervisor, is hereby authorized to execute the aforementioned stipulation and any other necessary documentations required in connection therewith. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Can we get a roll call again?
Councilman Lugo?
Aye.
Councilman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Our final resolution for the voting meeting is authorizing payment of wages to employee number fifteen oh two. Whereas on or about November eight, two thousand and twenty-three, the Town of Carmel employee number fifteen oh two sustained an on-the-job injury to which the aforementioned employee is entitled to New York State workers' compensation benefits. And whereas Michael Stern, Highway Superintendent of the Town of Carmel, has advised the Town Board that the aforementioned employee is presently unable to return to his work duties. And whereas the Highway Superintendent has recommended extension of the aforementioned employee's wages pursuant to the terms and conditions of the Town of Carmel Employee Handbook, as well as terms and conditions of the contract between the aforementioned employee's bargaining unit and the Town of Carmel. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes the payment of wages to employee number fifteen oh two for a period of an additional three months commencing November eleven, two thousand and twenty-four, and terminating February ten, two thousand and fifteen. I offer this as read.
Second.
Seconded by Lombardi, and a roll call, please.
Councilman Lugo?
Aye.
Councilman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes.
So Supervisor, before we move on, I'd like to make a motion to move the public hearing on the zoning, which was scheduled for next Wednesday, the eleventh, to Wednesday, December se- eighteenth.
At seven P.M.
At seven P.M. So I. Yeah, I'm rescheduling.
Okay.
I'd like to reschedule, so I make a.
Second.
You second, thank you.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Is that good?
Is that good?
Yep, all right.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we have to authorize reposting?
We're gonna do that, the posting is gonna be done by Friday on our website.
The public hearing was already noticed, okay, and the law is voluminous. So what's happened is the public hearing was noticed within time before the public hearing was originally scheduled. The law went on the site, there's gonna be some minor revisions to it, and we have to give it another ten days for it to be available on the site and the bulletin board. That'll be the eighteenth, we can have it in by Friday, that'll make the ten twenty cutoff.
But Town Clerk doesn't need to be authorized again, she can just pass it down. Very good.
Does it need to be republished, or no?
No, the notice does not, we're just rescheduling the date, okay? The law wasn't published, the law is on the site and on the bulletin board because it's, I don't know, seventy, three hundred pages of law, right? So it's on the site. So that'll do it, as long as we have it, Monday's the, Sunday's the eighth, so it has to be in by Friday to make the minimum ten days. Okay?
And she already made it, so I'll send it tomorrow to you, Alice, and to Kevin.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Alice?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get a motion to close the voting meeting.
So moved.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to open the work session.
So moved.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Alice.
Thank you, have a good night, thank you. Have a good night.
So before we begin, I ask the Board to review the minutes from the November twentieth, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four meeting provided by our town clerk. First up, second up, and third up is Nina Calmeyer, Director of Recreation and Parks. First, we're considering a request to repair the fence at Jimmy McDonough Park. Hello, Nina.
Good evening, Board. All right. So first up, we are looking to replace the fence in Skate Park at McDonough Park. We've received three quotes from WBE Fence, the amount of nine thousand four hundred and twenty, Campanella Fence, twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, and Salem Fence, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. We do have sufficient funds in the budget to cover the cost of this repair, and I am recommending that we utilize the lowest bidder, WBE Fence, to do this work and clean up the skate park. The portion of the fence that we're looking to replace is on the side when you're going down towards the parking lot. There's a lot of overgrown weeds and trees that are on that side of that fence, so we think that removing that vegetation, changing the fence, will definitely help the aesthetics of that portion of the park until we're ready to move forward with hopefully a master plan for McDonough, to redo the whole thing.
I just have a few questions.
Sure.
On the lowest bidder, it's a very one-sentence bid.
Yep.
On the other bids, it has that they're using galvanized. I don't know what this person's using.
Okay.
This group. It's also saying, the other bids are saying that they are installing top and middle rails, rail to match existing, I don't see that.
Okay.
I don't see that prevailing rate is on the one that you wanna choose.
On WBE?
Yep.
Okay.
And I don't, there was the bottom, top, middle, bottom rail.
Yep.
And line posts. So I just need that.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it, but it just, their proposal has to include that.
Absolutely, Alice, to make sure that it's included in that, but I mean, that was part of the scope of work, so.
Before next week, before, actually before Friday.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Okay.
And make sure that the rail's prevailing, and just make sure that it is exactly the same.
Prevailing wage, well, you know, it just, yeah, it has to say a little bit, and that they're removing it all.
Yes.
You know, here it just says that they're removing, but it doesn't say like that they're taking it away.
Yes.
You know, it's different, we can remove anything and you leave it there.
No, absolutely, I think that the.
We want them to haul it away also.
The company, that WBE Fence, we've done a lot of work with them in the past.
Okay.
And they, you know, have always really done the right thing and did all that, but I'll make sure that it's written in their quote.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Nina, that was all part of the proposal, though, right?
Yes. Yeah, and I met out there with them, too, each of the companies, to go over them.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Nina.
Yep, of course.
And next up, you have bid C Three O Four, renovation of the fieldhouse bleachers dugouts.
Awesome, perfect. So yes, on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, at eleven A.M., bids were opened by the Town Clerk for the above project, that is C Three O Four, renovation of the fieldhouse bleacher pads and dugouts at McDonough Park, which we are looking to utilize ARPA funding for. I did attach a copy of the bid results to our packet. The scope of work really involves repairing the fieldhouse, redoing the bleachers to make them look aesthetically pleasing, adding a concrete base in all of them, as well as working with the dugouts. So we did receive a total of seven sets of bid documents, or I'm sorry, seven sets of bid documents were picked up. We did have a pre-bid meeting, and all seven contractors did attend that mandatory pre-bid meeting on the eighteenth of November. We did only receive two bids for this project out of the seven. And we did an analysis on those two bidders, and a copy of that assessment was provided to the Board. Based on the evaluation of the bid amounts, experience of bidder, project needs, and prior experience, we're recommending that the contract be awarded to Marudi Construction, LLC, in the amount of one thousand one hundred, one hundred and eleven dollars, I'm sorry, one thousand, I'm sorry, one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred dollars.
I know, there's a lot of ones in zeros.
Sorry. As the lowest qualified bidder for the project, I also would ask the Board if they can vote on this item tonight, if possible, so we can move forward with the contract documents and hopefully have signed contracts by the end of the ARPA money, twenty twenty-four.
So if you look, the last page is a resolution. Resolution authorizing the award of bid, McDonough Park renovations, Contract C Three O Four, whereas the Town Board of the Town of Carmel has previously authorized advertisement for various improvements to be performed at McDonough Park specifically for the renovation of the fieldhouse, bleacher pad dugouts at said facility. And whereas such bids were received and opened on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and that a bid opening memo is on file with Town Clerk Alice Daly. And now therefore be it resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Carmel, upon the recommendation, Town of Carmel Director of Recreation and Parks Nina Calmeyer hereby awards the aforementioned bid to Marucci Construction LLC, Jersey City, New Jersey, the low responsible bidder, meeting specifications at a contract cost of one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred dollars. And be it further resolved that upon review of the insurance certificates and bonds, inform acceptable Town Council, Town Supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to execute all contract instruments and other documentation necessary to accept such bid and contract for said services. I offer this as read.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Lombardi, and McDonough, and.
Councilman Lugo?
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item.
Perfect. So the last item I have for you guys is in regards to C Three O Five, renovation of RFG Community Center at Sycamore Park, which also is another project that we are looking to utilize ARPA funding for. So on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, at eleven A.M., bids were opened by the Town Clerk for the above project. A copy of the bid opening results are attached. Scope of work involves the furnishing of all tools, equipment materials, and labor for the renovation of the RFG Community Center at Sycamore Park, including exterior painting, replacement of exterior wood shake siding, exterior wood trim, wood windows, and the removal and replacement of three doors, one existing Bilco basement door, exterior vinyl lattice foundation, skirting panels, masonry foundation, repointing, and paring. So a total of seven sets of bid documents were picked up by prospective bidders and contractors for bidding services. Six contractors attended our mandatory pre-bid meeting on November nineteenth. One addendum was issued, and four bids were received. We did an analysis on those bidders, and a copy of the assessment is provided, attached. Based on the evaluation of the bid amounts, we are recommending that the contract be awarded to Tundra Contracting Group, Incorporated, in the amount of one hundred and three thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, as the lowest qualified bidder for the project. I also would ask the Board if they can vote on this item tonight, so we can move forward with the contract documents and have them signed by the end, twenty twenty-four.
Read it. Go ahead.
Resolution authorizing award of bid, Sycamore Park renovations, Contract C Three Zero Five, whereas the Town Board of the Town of Carmel has previously authorized advertisement for various improvements to be performed at Sycamore Park, specifically for the painting, siding replacement, trim replacement, door replacement, and window repair replacement at said facility. And whereas such bids were received and opened on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and a bid opening memo is on file with Town Clerk Alice Daly. And now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Carmel, upon the recommendation of Town of Carmel Director of Recreation and Parks Nina Calmeyer, hereby awards the aforementioned bid to Tundra Contracting Group, Inc., Staten Island, New York, New Jersey, the low responsible bidder meeting specifications at a contract cost of one hundred and three thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And be it further resolved that upon review of insurance, certificates, and bonds, inform acceptable to Town Council, Town Supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to execute all contract instruments and other documentation necessary to accept such bid and contract for said services. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Nope, second.
Councilman Lugo?
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi?
Yes.
Supervisor Kazari?
So, just for your information, this is all ARPA money that's being spent?
Just for your information, this is all ARPA money that's being spent, and we have to have the contracts in before the end of the month, so that's why we're hurrying this along.
Thank you, Board, appreciate it.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you, Nina.
Our fourth item is with our Highway Superintendent, Michael Stern. Consider purchase of diesel under New York State Officer General Services contract.
Good evening, Board. I am requesting authorization to purchase bulk diesel fuel from Sprague Operating Resources, LLC, per New York State OGS Group Five Six Oh Two, in the contract period of November twenty-first of twenty-four through August twentieth of twenty-six. Any questions on that? That was finally uploaded by the state last week.
And your second item is consider request to award your fall bids.
Yep, roughly two weeks ago, we had our fall bids opened up for wash sand, winter mix, and guide rail, and I am recommending the following bids be awarded, wash sand for Wingdale, winter mix through package pavement, and the guide rail through Chumong Supply. All right. Quickly, if I may, real quick, obviously, we might have some snow tonight coming in, and we ask that garbage pails be brought in. The arms on the garbage trucks go like twelve feet, so people can actually put them out of the roadway, and the garbage trucks can still get them. That way they don't get knocked over constantly and broken. Cars on the roadway, I know you guys, Dan, the police have put out memos on that, you know, in the last few weeks, but there is an ordinance from November through April that no cars are parked on the road, so we ask that they would be removed, put in the driveways on their lawns, that way there is no damage to the vehicles, and it just makes it safer, that way all the road gets plowed from curb to curb. And our blacktop is wrapping up tomorrow, and that was all ARPA money used for that as well, and I think we roughly got twenty-seven roads blacktopped this year, so.
Great.
It went a long ways. Good. So thank you guys for everything.
Thanks, Mike, and thanks for the reminder.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
So the sixth item on the work session is Richard J. Franzetti, P.E., Town Engineer. Consider request to substitute collateral.
Good evening, Board, welcome aboard, Councilman Lugo.
Thank you.
Yes, so this one is a planning board. The performance bond was issued of sixty-three thousand dollars, was posted for one oh two Glenider Avenue, DPL Realty, in October of twenty-two. The property has since been sold to Putnam County Housing Corporation, and a substitution collateral bond was issued by Merchants Bonding Company. We're just requesting that it be replaced, or exchanged, I apologize.
Yep.
Resolution authorized, substitution.
Okay, yes. And I had asked what this was, and this is apartments above the first floor, it's a second and third floor apartments, two-bedroom apartments, I believe is what they requested in twenty twenty-one, and now it goes to.
And were approved, yes, by the planning board.
Yeah. Okay, next up is change order for Contract C Two Six Eight.
So as Supervisor mentioned, this is for Contract Two Six Eight, the townwide water tank rehab for Carmel Water Districts Two, Three, Eight, and Fourteen, really is the last tank that is in Water District Eight, which is right up the block here on Crest Road. It was awarded to Arrow Construction in twenty twenty-one. The water aid operators, B and J Plumbing, have requested to test temporary water system prior to conducting work on the Crest Road tank. This request is due to fault errors that we've experienced with the original variable frequency drives, which have since been replaced. The intent is to use the new variable frequency drives and temporary hydro pneumatic tank for a period of two weeks prior to taking the Crest Road tank out of service for rehab. The work includes mobilization, install operation, temporary hydro pneumatic tank. Change order provides compensation for the rental of the temporary hydro pneumatic tanks for an additional two-week period, the order not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Also asking for a no-cost change order regarding the timing of this and expanding it to when we finish the project, with final completion in July of twenty twenty-five, July thirtieth. So we're moving it up by two hundred and eleven days. So Weston and Sampson is the engineers helping us out with this, there's a more detailed explanation attached. This work was included in the expenses for the bonds that we've issued for this project, and so, and also the work is impacted by those of Carmel Water Districts One, Eight, Ten, and Thirteen, as they are all impacted by a used Crest Road tank. There are sufficient funds for this project.
So Rich, when this was put into place, didn't you contemplate the temporary hydro pneumatic tanks?
No, 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 this has to do with doing it an extra two weeks.
Okay.
So what, so no matter what, hydro pneumatic tanks are needed.
Yeah.
For this project. If you remember last year at the top of Kings Ridge, they had a hydro pneumatic tank, Water District Three, we had one over, we had it over at the highway yard. Water District Three, we had one over, we had it over at the highway yard, over in their sewer district four. We had two of them set up there. So, they're set up, they provide pressure in lieu of what the tank would normally do. This is out of an abundance of caution. We've had issues with the VFDs. We haven't had issues with the new variable frequency drives. But our operators, you know, burn me once, you know, fool me once, you got me, right? Second time, we don't want to do it. So, that's where they're at. They were like, hey, let's just run this without taking the tank out of service in essence. Because when we do finally use the hydro pneumatic tank, as it's supposed to be, the tank is completely drained. If you remember Kings Ridge, Kings Ridge, we had to get a new floor for it, we had to go and get a change order for all that because everything was shot. We're assuming the same thing's happening on this one. We're exchanging the floor and we're upgrading the tank on that level. But before we empty that tank and get to that point, we want to make sure that the VFDs alone with the hydro pneumatic tank can work. So, that's what this is all about.
Okay.
It's just really a rental.
Sorry?
It's just really a rental for two weeks.
It's an additional rental.
Yeah.
It's part of the original scope that was awarded. That rental was already there. This is additional rental.
An additional two weeks. Okay.
Oh, thank you. Oh, it's not the next one. Next one is acknowledge emergency repairs.
So, this memo is being presented to the board to revise of emergency invoices and submitted for payment and authorization in excess of ten thousand dollars of services rendered. In Carmel Water District Four, there was a water main break on November sixteenth at four Daisy Lane. The operator, B and J, for Carmel Water District Four, had alerted the engineering department. There is an invoice in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-eight cents to make the repair. There are insufficient funds in the operating budget for this expense, and a budget transfer from the unreserved fund balance to pay for this repair will need to be submitted.
Okay. All right, and then the roof replacement?
So, I know I spoke to some board members earlier today, so this has to do with ARPA funds and the town hall roof replacement, including this building. On November twenty-second, bids were opened by the town clerk. Bid opening results are attached to the memo. The scope includes furnishing all tools, equipment, materials, and labor for the removal and replacement of the existing foam material roof located on the top of town hall. Total of fifteen set of bid documents were picked up by prospective bidders. Fifteen contractors attended the mandatory October third pre-bid meeting. Three addendums were issued for this project. A total of six bids were received. The lowest three bids are provided in the table in the document. There is an attached bid tabulation, and so while we go through it, New Vista Design General Contracts, this was the lowest at four hundred, Armertight was four forty-seven, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, and Niko K Construction at five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. In review of New Vista's, which was the apparent low bidder, the bid package submitted by them acknowledged only two out of the three addenda and did not acknowledge the Corona State and Local Virus Fund addendum. As a result, the bidder was deemed an unresponsible bidder and disqualified. Armertight Construction, bidder number two at four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, had all the requisite information and acknowledged all three addenda. However, they did not acknowledge the coronavirus state local fiscal refund addendum, and they were deemed unresponsive and their bid disqualified. So, we went to the third, and today they, that is Niko K, they've been operating under that name for eleven years. They provided list of references. I told the references today, they identified all the addenda, they had the ARPA funding addendum associated with it. And so, based on the evaluation of the bids, experience of the bidder, and project references, the department recommends the contract be awarded to Niko K Construction as the lowest responsible bidder for the project at five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And at this time, I'd like for the board, again, because similar to what you did with Nina, is to vote on this particular request so that we can move forward with the contracts for ARPA funding.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so this resolution is authorizing the award of the bid for town hall roof replacement, contract C three hundred. Whereas the town board of the town of Carmel has previously authorized advertisement for various improvements to be performed at Carmel Town Hall specifically for the replacement of the existing roof of said facility. And whereas such bids were received and opened on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and a bid opening memo is on file with the town clerk Alice Daly. And therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Carmel, upon the recommendation of Town of Carmel engineer Richard J. Franzetti, P.E., hereby awards the aforementioned bid to Niko K Construction Corp., Plainville, New York, the low responsible bidder meeting specifications at a contract cost of five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that upon review of insurance certificates, bonds in the form acceptable to town council, town supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to execute all contract instruments and other documentation necessary to accept such bid in the contract for said services. I offer this as read.
Second.
Seconded by Lombardi.
Councilman Lugo.
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi.
Aye.
Yes.
Supervisor Kazari.
Yep, you have one?
You want it?
I know how to go.
You're trying, Mike, you're trying.
Video.
You're trying.
It's video, fine. And then your last item, right?
So, similar idea. This is for ARPA funds. This is for the town flooring, carpeting only. December second, bids were opened by the town clerk. The scope of work involves furnishing tools, equipment, materials, and labor for the removal and replacement of existing carpeting and cover bases located in town hall. One set of documents was picked up by a bidder, contracted bidding on the services, and that took a person attended the mandatory meeting. No addenda were issued. One big package was received from Freight Liquidators here in Mayapac for the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. All the required information was submitted by the bidder. The board should note that Freight Liquidators had previously installed the flooring at town hall, which was inspected by this apartment, and they have been satisfied with the workmanship of materials and performance of Freight Liquidators. We recommend that Freight Liquidators, as the lowest responsible bidder, be awarded this project, and it will be funded through ARPA funds. And I also respectfully ask that if the board can vote on this, I can move forward with getting the contracts done. And wait, and before. Yes, sir.
Will that work be done during regular business hours or will that work be done after hours?
It'll be done after hours.
And when will that work start?
Right after probably the A.C., the roof, and the painting get done.
Stop it. All right, thanks.
The board should note that in Supervisor's office, there are samples of the rugs that are there and the cover bases for you to choose and let us know. And then, you know, Freight Liquidators, once we award it, you know, we can tell them what we want.
Yeah, I did see them, but I'd like to see the paint color first.
Paint colors are what was directed in the, so the paint, the paint specs I'll have for you guys next week, they came in yesterday. I just didn't have time to review and call the references.
Yep.
What we directed them to do was to match the existing colors on the wall.
Okay.
Right? So, and that's throughout the whole building. So, it's really only the public spaces. So, whatever you see on the wall is going to match as close as possible.
Is going to match it.
Right?
Okay.
So, that's, that answers, I guess, your question to see the paint colors.
Exactly, got it.
Right.
Thank you.
So, if nobody on the board opposes it, then we have a resolution authorizing the award of the bid for the town hall flooring and carpeting contract C three oh three. Could you read that one for us?
Sure.
Councilwoman McDonough.
Whereas the town board of the town of Carmel has previously authorized advertisement for various improvements to be performed at Carmel Town Hall specifically for the removal and replacement of existing carpeting and cover bases at said facility. And whereas such bids were received and opened on December second, twenty twenty-four, and a bid opening memo is on file with town clerk Alice Daly. And now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Carmel, upon the recommendation of Town of Carmel engineer Richard J. Franzetti, P.E., hereby awards the aforementioned bid to Freight Liquidators Mahopac, New York, the lowest responsible bidder meeting specifications at a contract cost of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And be it further resolved that upon review of insurance certificates and bonds, inform acceptable to town council, town supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to execute all contract instruments and other documentation necessary to accept such bid and contract for said services. I offer this resolution as read.
Second. Councilman Lugo.
Aye.
Councilman Lombardi.
Aye.
Councilwoman McDonough.
Yes.
Supervisor Kazari.
Yes.
If I may, to just address Councilman Kearns' kind of question, the work will be done after hours and on weekends. There will be a need to have a town employee be with them, whoever is here, and that will be the same for the painting. So, either we're going to have a maintenance person by that time. I don't know what the town board is thinking that way, but if we do, last time it was Joe Harmon who was here. I've spoken to Kevin about it. When we did the carpeting last time, they will not move the computers. Remember, the couple of contractors we had to go, Sullivan Data, they wouldn't let us test the computers, so you had to have them in here. So, they were in here doing that work. We're going to need somebody to move those computers, at least disconnect them. He could do the carpeting and then reconnect the computers. So, we, just logistics, but you just need to be aware that there are additional need for personnel to be here after hours or, you know, to just help out with it, right? So, just so you know.
Thank you.
Are they going to provide us with colored blocks for formal or are they matching existing?
No, this, samples in the Supervisor's office.
All right, thank you.
So, the answer is yes, they've already provided them.
All right, thank you. Thank you, board.
All right, thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
So, public comment, five minutes from any resident or business. Yep, just go up, give us your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Luke Corcione. My family and I live in Mayapac. And please bear with me because I'm a little bit nervous. I'm not used to public speaking, as this is my first time here. I am here this evening to address some concerns, and I am requesting an urgent call to action concerning ATV safety on public roads. On November third, my daughter Natalie had an accident, which caused her vehicle to flip over on its side due to an ATV with blinding headlights driving at night recklessly on Walden Place Road. I may to express my concern regarding my daughter's accident that should never have occurred. ATVs on public roads within our community are not allowed. I understand it is not illegal to own and operate an ATV. It is illegal for them to be driven on public roads, and should be illegal with hefty fines and penalties should someone be caught driving one on a public road. My research on this and the matter has brought to my attention many complaints. And in addition to my daughter's incident, there was another one two weeks later involving an ATV recklessly causing a woman to lose control of her car in the intersection on, in Red Mills on Sixth End. Riding at night on our roadways poses significant threat to the safety of pedestrians and other shared public road users such as my daughter. ATVs are designed for off-road use and are not equipped with the necessary safety features to operate safely on paved roads. Delimited visibility, bright headlights, or lack of headlights, turn signals coupled with unstable handling, especially with inexperienced operator, to make highly susceptible to causing accidents, and terrorize police and the public. The consequences of Natalie's accident have been devastating to her and us. Natalie has serious injuries, including a concussion, double vision, a broken orbital bone, hematoma, and PTSD. We're fortunate enough that the accident was not a fatality. The operator of the ATV left the scene of the accident inhumanly and could have killed our daughter. To address this issue, I urge that you all take immediate action to implement following measures to protect our community members. Strict enforcement of ATV regulations, enforce existing laws prohibiting ATV use on public roads, and increase patrols in areas where ATV accidents are prevalent, have better police training, operators to be apprehended, and where applicable, hold the parents of minors responsible. Possible signage designated use areas from dawn to dusk and a list of sites, locations on the website or a town hall where ATVs, dirt bikes can be safely driven. Driving them on the roads in Mayapac Middle School and High School turf is far from safe. While I've been reaching, reaching out to our senator, local politicians, et cetera, my work alone isn't enough to change the rules and regulations for off-road vehicles to protect our community, and we need your help. The increasing prevalence of ATV use in our town's roads possesses a serious threat to public safety. These powerful off-road vehicles, when operated on paved roads, especially after dark, are a recipe for disaster. It's time to take decisive action to protect our community. We urge our town officials to implement stricter regulations, harsher penalties for those who disregard these rules. Once again, here is what I'm proposing. Nighttime curfew, impose a strict curfew on ATVs using prohibiting operating during nighttime hours. Designated off-road areas, create signage, off-road areas for ATV enthusiasts to enjoy their hobby safely and responsibly. Increase patrols and surveillance, increase law enforcement patrols in areas prone to ATV activity, especially during nighttime hours, through police investigation post-accidents. Severe penalties, implement significant penalties for violators, including hefty fines, vehicle empowerment, and potential criminal charges. By taking these steps, we can reduce the risk of accidents, protect our residents, and preserve the peace and tranquility of our community. It is time to send a clear message that reckless ATV and off-road vehicles will not be tolerated on our public roadways, roadways, day or night. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the information.
There are some pictures that we took of the scene. My daughter is still suffering severely from that night. There's been rumors back and forth of at the scene, certain things, and I'm just telling you, I'm lucky that, my wife and I are lucky that she's alive today. The roads are terrorized by ATVs. They think they have the right to do what they want to do, when they want to do it, because it's hard for the police to go track them down. I think things need to be changed before there is a fatality, because then we're going to say, oh, now we need to do something. Thank you very much.
Sorry about your daughter's injuries, and thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if there are no other comments. This Saturday, the seventh, once again is the holiday on the lake up at the Hamilton Carmel. If you go to the Carmel Civic Association dot org website, you can see all the events that they have. This is the thirtieth year that they've been doing it. Four o'clock, they start with the hayrides, and it goes right through with chowder and the kids from the Kent Schools, choir sings, and the tree lighting. It's really, the parade is amazing, but the whole thing is amazing. The Carmel Fire Department is also having their breakfast with Santa on Saturday morning at, from eight to twelve. Pancakes, scrambled eggs, bacon, sausage, coffee, tea, and juice. Take pictures with Santa at the Carmel Firehouse. The Reed Library is having crafts for the children at eleven and snacks. They've got a sing-along at twelve, and Santa's visiting the Reed Memorial Library at one. And of course, six o'clock is the parade. Knights of Columbus is having their vendor bazaar from two thirty to nine. It's in the county parking lot behind Ten Fair Street where the Knights of Columbus is. And St. James, every year does their vendors inside from nine to three in the gym. And that's all that I have for today.
Yeah, I just want to thank Nina and Amanda in the Recreation Department. I got word from someone who attended your Saturday event at the Holiday in the Park, and they literally said it reminded them of a Hallmark movie. So, kudos and thank you. I did want to bring up Cookies with Santa. It is sold out, unfortunately or fortunately. So, next year when it comes, get in there early. But you can still go there and take pictures outside, Nina said. It's all decorated, really cool. So, you know, please go down to Sycamore Park and look at the candy cane houses and the gingerbread houses and, you know, really enjoy what you, the Recreation Department, is offering to the residents. So, thank you.
I definitely want to piggyback off of what Susie said. Thank you, Nina. Thank you, Amanda. That was a great event on Saturday, and the decorations have improved quite a bit, so I'm happy about that.
Yeah.
Yes, the Mayapac Chamber of Commerce.
Do you want to mention the dads that did the light poles? How wonderful that looks?
Thanks, Dad.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Dad, down at the end.
Yeah, the dads group, we have a dads group. Dads always doing something, and we're here to help the community and any organization that needs a lending hand. So, yeah, we were happy to be part of that, too. Thanks. Thanks, Nina.
It's come a long way since our kids.
Even like, yeah. Yeah.
Do you like her?
That's it.
Sure.
First, I want to congratulate Councilman Lugo on joining us on the day. I look forward to working with you. I want to thank everyone who came out for our first Thanksgiving Day parade. It was a huge success. I want to give a shout out to the Carmel Police Department and the Mayapac Fire Department. Without them, we wouldn't have been able to pull it off, so I want to thank both of them personally. And also, I want to congratulate Nina and the Chamber of Commerce. I just want to piggyback what Susie and Mike said. It was a fantastic event last week, and, you know, my kids loved it, and I look forward to doing more friendly events throughout town. So again, congratulations, Mike. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Rob.
Now, I'm going to go back to Disney craziness.
So we get a motion to go to Executive Secretary to discuss contracts.
Yeah.
Oh, in favor. Thank you. See you on the eleventh.